We're gonna go ahead and I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I want to thank everyone for being here. Obviously, we have a lot of people here tonight. We have a few things going on. We'll do our best to keep things moving. But at this point, I'm gonna ask Councilman Hurley to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And I would ask that, once we're done with the pledge, those that can remain standing, could you just remain standing for a few minutes, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I just, over the last three weeks, we've lost a couple people, a couple important people in town. Joel Edman, who frequented our council meetings. His family is very well-known in town. They had a family farm while he grew up. His father actually was a first selectman back in, I believe, the early 50s. And he did pass away a number of days ago. And I just wanted to acknowledge his passing and how much, you know, while him and I certainly didn't always agree on everything, you know, he did pay attention. He was an important part of the community. The other one is obviously Helen Brigetti, who passed away last week. You know, her commitment to the town, her commitment to the town of Plainville, her commitment to her community. Fortunately, I was able to witness that firsthand, having served for a number of years with her here on the town council. You know, a lot has been said. I don't think, you know, certainly you can't question her, her commitment to the community and all that she's done. So I do want to acknowledge both of those. And I would like to just hold a brief moment of silence in honor of both of them before we start the regular meeting. Okay, thank you very much. What we'll do now, we will go on to the, and I'll turn on my mic so now everybody can hear me if you couldn't before. So I know we've gone a couple meetings without a presentation, so we felt everyone missed them, but tonight, we're lucky enough to have our fire marshal, Mr. Diver, here to present some awards for the fire prevention poster contest winner. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you.
And I believe Councilman Underwood is gonna assist as necessary.
Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Ron Diver. I'm the town's fire marshal. Just gonna do a small little presentation. Fires continue to be a major problem in Connecticut, causing substantial economic loss, injuries, and death. Last year, there were 141 fire-related injuries, 23 deaths in Connecticut and residential homes, where there were 3,688 fires. 2,189 fires were related to cooking, 301 were related to chimney fires, 211 were related to malfunctions, and 466 were trash-related. Residential fires by heating sources. In an effort to reduce these fires, it's essential that everyone understands and practices the importance of fire prevention in their homes. The influence of fire safety education, particularly among school-aged children who take lessons home from, take lessons home with them, cannot be underestimated. The Connecticut Fire Prevention Poster Recognition Program creates this learning opportunity for students, their families, and the public. Our work with these students and their enthusiasm for passing the valuable lessons may save lives. This evening, I have Emmy Blanco and I have Taylor Carrier. They are the fourth and fifth grade winners of the fire prevention poster contest. If you guys can come up, please. On the screen, you'll see their posters. Currently, they are there, they are at the county level being judged. They're not back yet, so we don't know where they stand in the county-level process. If they are lucky enough to move forward, we will pass that information along. But I have a certificate of achievement to Emmy Blanco. And another one for Taylor Carrier. Along with that, is that you smoke the texture? And then a small little gift certificate, enjoy that. And the same for you as well. You're welcome. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations to the winners. Good luck at the county level. Hope to see you at the state level next. So what we're gonna do, as we try to move the TV out of the way a little bit, we obviously have our public hearing tonight. The first item I'll do, or first action I'll ask for, is the town clerk to read the call to the public hearing, please.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 5th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers at the municipal center in Plainville, Connecticut, to consider the following matter: A proposed ordinance entitled "Ordinance Appropriating $61,915,000 for Renovations and Improvements to the Middle School of Plainville and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds and Notes to Finance the Portion of the Appropriation Not Defrayed from Grants." The copy of the proposed ordinance is on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours in the office of the town clerk and at the Plainville Public Library, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this first day of February 2024.
All right, thank you. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to the town manager to give kind of a brief description of why we're here tonight and why we're having a public hearing.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're here to hear public comment, as the clerk just read the notice. This is the public's opportunity to comment on a project, which is the middle school. And the project has been discussed over the past several years. In October of 2021, the town of Plainville consulted with Construction Solutions Group, CSG, to develop an application to receive state reimbursement, including a comprehensive cost estimate, enrollment projections, and architectural schematics and educational specifications. Additionally, CSG developed options for the Board of Education to consider. The town looked at and considered three options as part of the process. It was incremental improvements was the first one, and the cost-benefit analysis indicated that this option is more expensive for the town in both the short term and long term, as minimal state grants are available with this option. Second option was new construction, and building on the current site was deemed not feasible. And the acquisition costs for acquiring additional suitable land and designing a new school was not, was not viable option, was the most expensive option. And then the third option, renovate as new, which is the, using the existing building structure and adding necessary upgrades to the interior exterior. This method is the most cost-effective option because it maximizes state reimbursement. As we know, the school, current middle school facility received its certification of occupancy in December of 1990. After 30-plus years, the mechanical systems, roof, infrastructure, components, security design, and instructional facilities have become worn and deficient and/or outdated. And therefore, in December of 2023, the town council voted to propose a renovate-as-new project. The total estimated cost of the project is $61,913,393. And when factoring in the state's reimbursement rate of 65.36% for Plainville, the estimated local cost for the town of Plainville is $25,712,633. A project budget summary and additional information can be viewed and is available on the town's website. And so with that, I know there's plenty of information, but beyond the information we have, I encourage everyone to visit the website. If, that address, if you want to go directly, is www.plainvillect.com/mspbuildingproject. There's a ton of information there. And we're certainly open to questions this evening as well. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all right, thank you very much. What I'm gonna do, before I refer to the list, I just want to follow up. At our last meeting, we did have a question raised, and Marilyn, I don't know where you ended up sitting, but Marilyn had brought up, there you are, but you had brought up a question on, you know, can we have a referendum where you can choose either option A or B? And there was some discussion about whether we could do that. And we did get an opinion, not an opinion, we got a, we got an answer to that question. And it, under General Statute Section 9-369, all ballot questions need to be a yes or no vote for a single question, whether it's approved or disapproved. And legislation was introduced in the last session to add to that statute the common law requirement that ballot questions use short, simple words and clear, plain language. You are allowed to have multiple referendum questions, but they do have to be independent of each other. So just in regards, we told you we'd get an answer, so just that's the information. Based on the referendum, we would have to have a yes or no answer on the referendum. So I hope that helps. And at this point, what I'd like to do is, anyone that wishes to speak can do so. I'm gonna go through the list first of those that signed up. We'll just ask you to step to the podium. If you can give your name and address, we'll give you three minutes to make your comments. You will hear a ring. The first ring means you have 30 seconds left. The second ring means you've run out of time. So, you know, obviously, we're not gonna just shut the mic off at the second ring, but if you could wrap up your comments within five or 10 seconds of that, that would be appreciated, because I have a feeling we're gonna have quite a few people who want to speak. The other thing I would just like to encourage is, I know there's a lot of passion in the room tonight about the middle school, but, you know, if we can avoid clapping and yelling and booing and cheering, it just, you know, try to keep it, I don't wanna say civilized, but do your best just to, you know, keep that stuff to yourself if you could tonight. And I think that's all I wanted to say. So with that, I will, what we're gonna do now is, we did have some people who weren't able to be here tonight. We're gonna go ahead and, we have like five emails that were submitted. We're gonna read those into the record, and then I'm gonna open it up to the people on the list and go from there.
First email is from Kelly and Tim Maynard, 141 Hollyberry Lane. I am writing in support of the renovate-like-new project for the middle school of Plainville. As a parent, clearly, I want a safe and productive learning environment for my children. I have two elementary-age children and plan, and the plan will be to send them to MSP unless we are forced to look outside of Plainville due to the continuing deterioration of the school. This is not something we want to do, but we have been, but we may be forced to have these discussions, as the building is unsafe in many ways. My second point for supporting this project is as a homeowner. In a study using a database of about 407,000 home sales in nearly 11,000 elementary school districts in 57 markets, the study concluded that, on average, buyers pay at least $50 more per square foot for homes in top-rated school districts compared with homes served by average-rated schools. As a result, it is safe to say that communities that invest in their education system see a financial return. As our school system goes through a significant and uncertain leadership change, we shouldn't be taking chances to lose the gains we've made in this area. By ignoring the failing infrastructure and technology of MSP, we certainly will be taking that risk. The last point I would like to make in this email is that Plainville population is changing and will continue to change. Older individuals are leaving and younger families are moving in. If we want to continue to have a safe and positive environment for these children to grow in, we need to show them we are invested in them. We know the education and duty as the adults in this town to give these children the very best foundation, and while that starts at home, it is definitely supported by the school system. I look forward to seeing the progress from the town council, Board of Education, and the Plainville Community Schools Administration. Second letter is from Jessica Daniel, 24 Robidoux Drive. I am unable to attend the public hearing on 2-5. I'm writing in full support of the MSP renovation. My children have experienced the antiquated building, and it's time to repair and renovate for the future MSP students. I look forward to being able to vote on this in March.
The next letter is from Charlotte Politis, 74 Tomlinson Avenue. I am appalled that it is taking so long to repair the roof, et cetera, on the middle school. The last parent night my family attended, some hallways were blocked off due to water pouring in from the rain. Shame on our town for letting this go so long. I urge you to get it fixed. The next letter is from Jamie Lindenmuth at 15 Bradley Street. Good evening, Plainville Town Council members. I'm writing to state my support for the renovate-as-new project for MSP. I would like my support as a Plainville resident to be noted off the meeting tomorrow. And the last one is from Rebecca Ahern. Good morning, Town Council. Thank you for pushing forward on this much-needed project for MSP. Our youth deserve the best learning environment possible. I fully support the plan on renovate-like-new. Have a wonderful day. That's it.
All right, so thank you for that. With that, I will open it up to the sign-up sheet. Dan Szyselski.
Thank you very much. First thing I want to say is, I'm in favor of fixing the middle school. We need to do it. It's a long problem, a project that needed to be done, so we should do what we need to do there. But I'm asking the question of the council, and my question is, is what is the effect of this on our mill rate and our taxes? We're talking $61 million, we're talking $45 million, we're talking $11 million, we're talking $25 million, and I tell you, I can't figure out what any of this really, really means. So I'm asking, given this, this project passes, what's the effect of the mill rate? Given that this fails, that doesn't pass, what's the effect on our mill rate? So let's look at the first one. Let's just say that it does not pass, and it fails. So I'm looking at a situation where our debt service goes down, because we're no longer filling the debt service, so whatever's coming off the debt service reduces our, reduces our tax liability. So I'm guessing, on one hand, that our taxes would go down. However, it may not go down because of the increase in the board's almost 6% and the town council's 3%. But anyway, you get the picture is, I'd like to know what it is with the passes, I would like to know if it doesn't pass. And I also like to know if that $11 million item, that was an option, what the taxes would be there, because it said that the cost is greater than the benefit. But I'd still like to know what the effect of it would be on our taxes. So you guys have revenue, you know what the revenue is, you know what your expenses are, you probably know probably what's gonna come from the state, so that leaves the balance of, what are you gonna tax the people on? So given the assumptions that we have right now, and I know things could change, I'm asking if you could put something together on a couple scenarios that say to us, here's what the effect is going to be on our property tax. Again, I'm a senior, I'm fixed income, retired, but I support doing something for the middle school. And just to keep in mind that, when you look at the population in town, 35% of the population in town is in his 60s or older. So we have a significant portion of people who are in the retirement age. But again, I support you and I hope that you could come up with something that shows us what the effect would be on our taxes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Next, Mary Kuchar.
Mary McGinley Kuchar, 48 Milford Street. I'm here tonight to just say, renovate it like new. I mean, the fact that it's taken this long to even come to a referendum, when every other school in this town was renovated like new, gone to referendum, and it was up to the voters, not up to a handful of town council members who thought they knew better than the rest of us. Renovate it like new. The kids in this town deserve a beautiful school that's safe for them to go to school in, to learn, and to prosper. Good schools make good towns. Help your tax base. Renovate like new. No questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on the list, Ms. Curtis.
I'm Cara Curtis, 15 Maiden Lane. I don't have anything really special planned tonight to mention. I just wanted to say that I come in full support of our renovate-like-new. This has been a very long process, and I feel very optimistic that we're moving in the right direction. I know everyone has a lot of concerns, but I want us to think about the big picture of, if we do things piecemeal, we will not be reimbursed. And we have an opportunity to really get this school where it needs to be. And in the end, I think we will save money if we, if we are able to do that. Someone else, sorry, the renovate-like-new is in my mind. I guess what I would like to say is, we want to encourage people to move to this town. And I am incredibly proud of our schools and the fact that our high school was named one of the top schools. I think we need to continue that momentum, moving forward. And I will, I have four children. My youngest might not even benefit from this, but I'm telling you, that's okay, because I see, we're a town, we want to draw people to this town, we want to educate our children. And the more people that come here, as someone pointed out earlier, if we have great schools, our tax base will increase. So I guess I just want to say thank you so much for moving in this direction. It's just about time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on the list, Bethel Hairston.
I am in support of the renovate-as-new at the MSP. It's long overdue. I can probably speak for everybody and say, I'm tired of having this conversation. I would just like to move forward, and I'm grateful that we are. Like you just said, we are making progress, and I am super grateful for that, because nothing changes if nothing changes. It's a fact. So we are making changes, and I'm grateful for that. And I'm hopeful that this will go to referendum and we could vote and move forward. It's all about taking action. My word of 2024 is taking action, and this aligns with it if we can just move forward and take action, because again, nothing changes if nothing changes. So it's up to us to do something, and I look at it as an investment. You know, yes, sometimes you have to spend money to make money. That's just what it is. I know some people get nervous about spending, but this is something that is an investment and will give us money back in the long term. So I just want people to, you know, who live here, to just, you know, and my mom is a senior, and she lives with us, and, you know, she feels the same way, to just invest in our future. These kids are our future. Invest in our admins, our administration, our teachers. They should be able to go to a great environment where they don't have to worry about leakage of water or mice running through the classroom. I know we've said this, and I sound like a broken record, but they're facts. It's happening. And we can do something about it, and the town needs to be able to vote. So I'm grateful for you guys. Thank you for moving forward and making progress and listening to the people, because we would like to vote on the referendum and renovate-as-new with MSP. Full support, even if my taxes go up. Full support. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on the list, Anina Consalvo. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Good.
Hi, my name's Anina Consalvo, 540 Court. It is my last year at the middle school. For the past three years, I have seen all of the roof leaks, ceiling molds, and even some mice in my classrooms. The elevator breaks down often, and after my back surgery, I had to take the elevator often, knowing that it's likely to stop working at any moment. It didn't make me feel safe. I think the new kids coming into the school should have a better, cleaner, and safer environment to learn in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next, Alyssa Consalvo.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Consalvo, 540 Court, and I am in fifth grade. It's my last year before I go to the middle school, and I would really like the middle school to be renovated, because I am going to spend the next three years there. All students that will be going to the middle school deserve a new and better school to be educated in. A clever environment will help the students stay focused on their learning. We are, we are students, and our voices should be heard. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Marilyn Sharet.
Marilyn Sharet, 18 Milford, Plainville. I'm gonna stand alone. I'm opposed to the renovate-as-new. I would prefer to see the maintenance on this school, and it should have started a long time ago. Thank you.
All right, thank you. John Kislik, you are next.
John Kislik, 65 Forest, Willamette.
Good evening.
Three minutes tonight, because of big crowd.
Well, I'm not gonna, I told everyone before, and I'm not gonna interrupt you once you start talking, it's your three minutes.
Add quite a bit, as you all know, I'm opposed to renovate-as-new. $61 million is way out of line. And we had proposed before a renovation maintenance program, you know, and in the small print in this flyer that got out in spite of the steering committee, a few, few projects are subject to state reimbursement out of, out of the renovate-as-new programs, and they only give two examples, like a roof and a boiler. So the real state money for roof would be a major one, it's, you know, a couple million dollars anyway. But one of the problems they have with this is they're saying we're gonna get 65-point-something percent reimbursement. Now, Plainville's not a wealthy town, but with REVAL that we had and all these inflated house projects, our, grand list has probably gone up. And the way the state rates this on how you're gonna get reimbursement is by per capita. Now, that could move Plainville further up the line. It looks like we're more wealthy and get less money. So that's, that's one thought that I had, that most likely, we're not gonna get that kind of money for reimbursement. Take Linen Street School, for example, when we did that, they way overbuilt, and I had a feeling this will be too, when the state sees that $61 million. They're gonna have a problem with that. They have a formula for $450 per square foot when they figure how much money should be spent on this. I don't, I'm not an expert on this stuff, but there is something, and you can be overbuilt. And like Linen Street School, we're still paying, I believe, probably thousands of dollars a year that we had to make a deal with the state to bring in students from out of district. And we're still bussing them in and educating them. Education in Plainville per year per student costs a lot, and that's what I think is gonna happen here. With the $61 million is way too much money. Now, you have another item in here. Non-reimbursals, reimbursables, $4,265,000, that's gonna be part of this project that's not reimbursed. Why should we even consider those? You know, that could be, like we're saying with a maintenance project. There was a lot more I wanted to say, but you have a lot of people tonight, and I'll just let it go at that. I know this is a formality, and you're gonna approve it, but I am hoping that the people come out, and I think this will get voted down. The taxpayers, the majority of taxpayers, should see this, what's going on in the town with $61 million, and now with our budget increase coming up, huge $2.5 million Board of Ed wants, and the town's gonna need it. It's gonna happen because of COVID, and I think, and I'm hoping, that the taxpayers just vote this down, and let's start again and do this thing over. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on the list, Emily Wosley.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Thank you.
I'm Emily Wosley, 176 Stillwell Drive. I come here tonight to speak to you as a parent and as an educator. I come here tonight to speak to you as a parent and as an educator in this town. And although there can be stark differences between these two roles on a superficial level, the values of the two are at their core synonymous. At the same time, parenting and education are sometimes at odds, but what we are debating in here and now at its core has nothing to do with educational politics. We are not debating what is taught or how it is taught or who is teaching it or for what purpose. We are instead squabbling over whether or not the children in this town deserve safety, security, and comfort. The research is clear. Any educator worth their salt knows that Maslow's hierarchy of needs is rooted in physiological and safety needs, both of which have a tremendous impact on a student's trajectory and eventual success in life. Although the educational jargon likely does not matter to parents, and I don't blame you for that, it's a lot. Everyone raising a child innately knows at their core that in order to learn, those basic needs must be met. And don't our children deserve it? Of course, not every Plainville resident has children in the school system. I understand that the numbers of the project might seem scary and overwhelming, especially for those parents struggling financially and those on a fixed income. It's difficult to truly comprehend the cost of a project of this magnitude, but the numbers speak for themselves. This is about more than just kids and teachers. It's about property values. It's about community. Whether you're a Democrat, a Republican, an independent, or unaffiliated, I'm certain that we all want what is best for this community at large. And I'm, it's keep, about keeping families here and allowing our town to flourish. Thank you for your time and I have to go put my kids to bed.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next is Erin Nadonley.
Funny story, I didn't know that sign up sheet was to, uh, speak, so.
You don't have to, but.
It's okay. Uh, um, we moved here, my husband and I.
Just name and address.
Oh, sure. Um, Erin Nadonley, 29 Maxine Road. Um, my husband and I moved here about ten, twelve years ago, um, from another state and it was, it was a rough move and we were, you know, happy to be here at the same time. And one of the main things that we were focused on is how good the schools are supposed to be in New England. Um, that was so exciting for me, um, coming from an area that the schools weren't so great. Um, we moved to Plainville. My son goes to Tofflon. He's in fifth grade now. He loves it. The school's fantastic. When I found out about the middle school, I was devastated. I couldn't believe the, the things that I heard. Um, and I called, called the principal, I called other people that, you know, it wasn't, so I didn't, didn't just hear gossip and rumors. I wanted to know the truth and I wanted her to change my mind. Um, I, coming to this meeting, I'm hearing things again and, and I can't, I just can't believe it. It, it, school, a middle school should not be this way, especially there's only one in this whole town where all the children are gonna go. Um, so I really hope that, that it can change and I really hope that they can renovate the school as new, um, because the kids deserve it.
All right. Thank you. Um, I believe it's, uh, Tom Foley. Foley. Sorry about the name.
That's all right. Uh, Tom Foley, 15 Bradley Street. So first, uh, as many are who are here, I'm in favor of the renovate like new project. The town has spent a lot of time and a good amount of money looking at all the options, some of which were probably red herrings, for lack of a better way to put it. Um, and this has come out to be the best option and it isn't inexpensive, but it is economically the most efficient use of the resources we have. We get the most for it. Um, and it seems to me to be the obvious choice. Um, we look at debt service, uh, you know, talking about the mill rate, uh, that came up before. The facts we have now tell us that our current debt service can handle this without a, without an increase in the mill rate. And obviously there are caveats in there. We don't know what happens in the future, but that is a standard truth. We don't know what happens in the future. Um, you know, I look at property value. My property value has increased nicely over the last few years. I worry that's illusory and it's related to COVID and all the weirdness that came out of that. And a solid way to make that value hold up over time is to better our schools. And so I, the middle school is in the position of needing the most help at this point and it seems to be an excellent use of our resources. Um, having said that, more important than anything else, I want to say thank you for actually bringing us to the point where we may actually have a say. It's gonna go to vote and maybe it'll get voted down and I'll be sad, but the fact that the town will have voted is crucially important, giving everyone a voice. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, and Quentin Johansson.
My name is Quentin Johansson. I live at 371 Woodford Avenue, apartment thirty-two. Um, I support fully the renovate like new project. Frankly, what I've been hearing, um, over the time I've been living in this town and in the last few years is that that is in fact the best use of both our money and the state's money. Um, we need to let the government do its job and that's part of what getting the state money does. It lets the state help us out and it'll get us the best result. So, um, you know, otherwise it's being penny wise and pound foolish, you know, spending money in dribs and drabs and little if any reimbursement. Um, I would just assume, uh, and I, and I am glad that we're gonna be able to vote on it. I hope it passes, uh, but it's important to recognize that citizens have a right to vote and they have a right to make choices in their town. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So that, that completes the list of people that signed up to speak. What I'll do now is just open it up to anyone else who wishes to make any comments. Again, the same thing, just please give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. Does anyone else wish to address the council this evening on the public hearing? There's gotta be someone. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Gail Dennehy of 28 Perrin Road. I am here to speak on the middle school project referendum coming up soon. In December, I spoke with you about having in addition to the full renovate project for the middle school, to also have an option for maintenance only for the school projects to be spread out over time. So, uh, Chairman Wazorko, just a question for you.
Yeah.
On the, the ruling that you got, did that mean that you could not have two questions as long as they were yes and no?
You can have two independent questions, yes or no. Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I understood you properly.
Yeah.
Um, but you voted to go with just the full renovate citing that you had support for that option only.
Well, technically we haven't voted yet on that, but I understand.
Well, to go to referendum. Um, the timing of a full renovate is a heavy burden now on all Plainville residents due to the tremendous cost. Inflation on everyday costs are, as we all know, food, clothing, energy consumption, to name a few, are running very, very high and already a strain on our residents' budgets. The costs of building products and materials are also still very high for an MSP project. After reviewing your website, I noticed that the debt for the renovate only option, if voted in, does not include the interest on the debt, which would be approximately sixteen million over approximately twenty years. Um, this is what I was informed, um, on a projected twenty-six million debt cost after state rebate. So that was not included in the values shown on the projected cost on the website. It does make the renovate like new option a better option without this expense versus perhaps a maintenance option. I don't feel there was a complete transparency of figures because of this. I am hoping that the figures get adjusted to show the interest on the debt as well. Although this MSP project would fall under the debt service budget line item and we were told that there would be no direct cost to the taxpayer, however, what it does is create a max, as I see it, and somebody can certainly correct me, uh, for debt service, even though some other debt service projects might fall off the debt service. There would be other projects coming online and even with perhaps a higher grand list of income, there still could be significant mill rate increases because of the looming Board of Education and overall budget this year that would be discussed after the referendum vote. And there are no guarantees that the mill rate will not increase for the next several years with this large debt in place and future budgets to run the service of the town and the Board of Education. Um, in the past, there's been the ability perhaps to pull from debt service for higher budgets than the town could absorb with the grand list. But with this large expenditure, there would perhaps be no room to keep that mill rate acceptable. With nearly thirty-five percent of residents in town ages fifty to eighty and most in retirement age with fixed incomes, this project and our town budget will be significant for this group of taxpayers in terms of higher taxes overall.
Is that, are you?
I'm wrapping up.
Like one more sentence wrap up.
Yep. The project needs to be fiscally responsible for all taxpayers. I would vote against this MSP project referendum as it stands at this time. Thank you so much for listening.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council on the public hearing this evening? Yes.
Hello. Good evening. My name's Allison Osga. I'm at 29 Beachwood Road. Uh, I am in full support of the renovate like new and in full support of allowing the residents to vote for this. I'm a parent of a five-year-old and a three-year-old who I know will benefit from this project. Um, I think there's, the due diligence has been done, that this is the most financially responsible thing to do. And so I really hope that we will all be able to vote on it and I feel confident there's enough parents in here and this town who will support this and realize that this is the best thing for our kids. I can't stop thinking about the, uh, eighth grader, I think, who just talked about how she couldn't feel safe in her school because she couldn't use equipment like an elevator in the way it's supposed to be used. Um, so I also come here representing five other families in my neighborhood with kids of similar ages who all agree that we want to vote on this and we support this renovate like new.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, anyone else wish to address the council? Mr. Carrier?
First, I have to admit, I don't speak very well in this show. I want to apologize for that. My name is, uh, Rajene Carrier and I live at 28 Perrin Road. I've been a local builder for over fifty-five years and better. I'm, been part of this town for, for over forty years. I have, uh, spoken with the town manager recently in review, the renovate like new project for the middle school. On the town website, I wanted to say a few words on this. I noticed, for example, that the electrical distribution system was mentioned and need to be replaced, but I do find interesting as wiring should have a useful life, a well over thirty years, somewhere like fifty to one hundred years. But just like a home, major repair should and could be done over time, but not necessarily all at once. I noticed the significant expense on this project as a whole. Now, and see the extravagance for each taxpayer to absorb, even if it is the winning, winning the debt service line on the budget. While, while I have heard there will be no impact to the homeowner or taxpayer over a period of making the payment, although major repair, the town have not identified yet. While the limit, the liability for the town to add to the debt service as another project and this very large expenditure, all at once, winning the town budget looming over the horizon, those costs expected to have high increase, the mill rate will likely need to be increased. And with debt service at all the time high, this cost will not be directed to all of us as, I'm sorry, the costs, the, the costs will be directly to all of us as taxpayer as a mill, as a mill rate increase. As the compromise, my thought to have maintenance as needed discussion for this school so that all taxpayer can feel comfortable with the smallest expense over time. The costs of the material and labor have experienced since COVID, an increase by a greater forty percent and more. This is not the right time for cost reason, for labor, material, and of course, your taxpayer in town, including myself. I already experiencing food, experiencing food, utility, clothing, rent, and mortgage rate be at at all the time high due to inflation. I am speaking against the middle school project. As a renovation like new project, it is not the right time, not a reasonable decision for a taxpayer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry for my French English.
We made it.
I made it.
You did a good job. We're, uh, opening it up. Anyone else who wishes to address the council this evening on the public hearing? Anyone wanna address the council? Anybody?
Hi, Rebecca Martinez, eight Irving Street. I just wanted to come and express my support for the middle school, the renovate like new project. This is the most fiscally responsible proposal. Um, I've been disheartened to say the least by the misinformation that's been coming out, especially in the last couple of weeks. And I've been hearing a lot about this eleven million dollar plan. So this eleven million dollar plan didn't come from the Board of Education or didn't come from any construction company. It came from our previous council leadership. Um, I believe it was Kathy Puglisi's idea directly, but it was the lesser.
You're somewhat inaccurate, but I'll, I'll fix that later.
Perfect. That's wonderful.
Somewhat inaccurate.
Right. So that came from the previous leadership. So that did not take into account what the district actually needed. When we asked, when the Board of Ed was asked to say, what are the top items that you would actually need for an actual maintenance plan? That plan came in at twenty-nine million dollars, four million more than what renovate like new would do. And it was four million dollars more and it only fixed forty percent of the issues. With the reimbursement grant, renovate like new comes in four point four million, actually less. Um, and you know, as we all know, prices only go up. Um, last year, the previous council decided not to act on this and now it costs us one point eight million dollars more. When we're looking at a four percent increase, that's two point four million dollars a year. So this project costs two hundred thousand dollars more every month. Prices are gonna keep going up. They're not going to be coming down. Um, so I'm just urging the council to please act on this quickly and allow us, um, to vote. And I'm asking everybody here to just make sure that, you know, go to the webpage, reach out, the town manager's email is easily accessible, so is the superintendent, and just make sure that you're getting accurate information because I've seen directly what's came out in Hometown Connection and, um, you know, it seems the Republican Town Committee has started putting things on their Facebook page that are inaccurate. So just check the sources and there'll be plenty of information sessions and such this week and I'm excited and hopeful that this will go to vote. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Um, anyone else wish to address the council on the public hearing this evening? Anyone else? Yep. You'll be next.
Good evening. Kathy Puglisi, fifty, West Broad Street. Thank you for your kind words regarding Helen Brigani and Joel Edmund tonight. They certainly were folks that were well-known by a great many people in this town and your acknowledgement of that is certainly very much appreciated. Now, to the middle school. Um, I, um, yes, first I will address Mrs. Martinez regarding the eleven million dollar solution that there is some confusion about, but we must, we must speak to facts, so we'll do that right now. There was a conversation between some council members, um, town manager, superintendent of schools, then, um, Mr. LePage and Sam, who's the finance director. The list that was included in the eleven million dollar solution was provided by the administration of the schools in conjunction. of the schools in conjunction with the contractor who had put out the original estimate. So that information did come directly from the schools, just so you're aware. And back onto the $11 million, that list of items that was on there totaled 11.7, 11.8, but somehow the list morphed into $32 million along the way. And what's interesting about that $32 million number is that that is almost equal to the total construction hard cost provided by CSG when they did their original proposal. That original total hard cost was $34 million point $4. That included not just maintenance items, it included an entire list of maintenance, of actual construction costs, which was HVAC, electrical, site work, selective demolition, plumbing, membrane roofing, occupied renovation, swing space, fire protection, ceilings, flooring, temporary controls, finished carpentry. That is well beyond maintenance. Just to be clear about what the $11 million was representing initially and what it had morphed into as a $30 million maintenance option. So I just, I think it's important to understand all those numbers. I do understand that the council is going to recommend this for renovation to go out to a vote, and that's fine. And that's how it should be. People should vote on this, whether they approve it or they disapprove it, it is time to do this. However, I have one more item that I would like to discuss outside of the renovate like new, and this has to do with the performance of Plainville Public Schools. This has to also reflect in the schools' performances on the Smarter Balance testing, which is a state requirement measurement. I'll do it really fast, sorry. The Smarter Balance is aligned with the state's Connecticut Core Standards in Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science, which prepares students for college and beyond. It's administered to grades three through eight every single year. This has been going on since 2015. All of the children enrolled in grades three through eight and grade 11 have to take this test. Plainville has not met that standard in nine years. It is now time to not just build buildings, but to build the curriculum that's really going to prove the success of our students going forward. In closing thoughts, a couple of words, do better.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council on the public hearing tonight? Actually, I'm sorry, this young man is next.
I like the sound.
You know, as old as I am, it's...
Justin Gill, 2 Tyler Farms Road. First of all, town leadership, thank you for taking on this hot topic so early on in 2024. I'm in full support of the renovate as new, but that's not without a caveat and a question. You know, construction, I'm a construction professional. We heard from Mr. Carrier, I believe, about construction costs rising, material costs. Has this been considered? Has the contingency for the project been looked at recently, more recently than 2022? Because, you know, there was a time where we could go a couple of years with a budget and have it survive, and we would survive on a project, and those days are gone, and...
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I believe November 2023 was the last update we received on the project.
Okay.
So those numbers are four months old.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, next.
Hello, my name is Noel Mann, I live on 4 Chilene. And I'm speaking here today to ask for the town to be able to renovate, to vote on the renovation for MSP. The middle school has been needing a renovation for quite some time. There is mold, rodents, leaking ceilings, and outdated classrooms, and not safe security. When the roofs leak, we have to be forced out, we have to be forced up and down one tight stairwell, and it is not safe for the students. I don't want my sister and my cousins who are in elementary school to have to experience these not safe conditions. I've had to be evacuated from classrooms because there were rodents roaming around the floors, and it was disgusting, and our learning has been affected by these conditions. I hope that you will allow us taxpayers to vote for the renovation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to, a couple hands went up? Yeah.
Hi, my name is Sophie Mann, I live at 4 Chilene. I'm speaking here today to ask the town council to allow Plainville to vote for the renovate like new. I'm currently in fifth grade at Tofflon. I go to the middle school a lot because my mom works there, and I see how unsafe it is, and I want the other students and kids to be able to learn in a safe and comfortable environment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'm not ignoring this side of the room, but I did see one or two on this side. I'll do those two first, and then we'll come back to this side.
Hi, I'm Melissa Sweeney on 40 Glenwood Drive. I wasn't planning on speaking today, so forgive me. I am in support of renovate like new. I guess I'm a little surprised that we're still talking about this $11 million, I'd never heard of, solution, because we as parents have been at most of these meetings, and we don't forget what we were seeing happening live. If I'm not mistaken, I thought this $11 million came out when the then-town council was asking, if we only had $10 million, what would the school do with that? And I think how I recall it is, they named like a couple priorities, but that excluded so much. So it didn't change over time, they asked a specific question and was answered, and it's no solution. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, once.
Hey there, how's it going? Blaine Boxwell, 13 Jude Road in Plainville. My wife and I bought our house in 2018 intentionally. We thought if we're going to start a family one day, then we wanted to go to a school with a good school system, so we settled on Plainville after considering the mill rate with other towns. And we fell in love with the town, it's quiet, it's wonderful. My little girl's four next month, so she won't be in the middle school for a while. So I'm in favor of the renovate like new, but I am mindful of the message that would send to the parents that moved the town intentionally, that are raised in our families here intentionally, that are trying to build a community, that are giving back to the community. But I'm also mindful of the message that would send to would-be educators, or that rock star superintendent. If they see the town, if they perceive to be the town is not investing in its educators and professionals, why would they want to come and teach here? Why would they bring the resources here? And then our students, or I guess are not meeting a testing standard, they're not going to meet those testing standards unless they have high-quality educators. So I'm thinking about the parents, thinking about the children, but also thinking about the educators in town. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Were there a couple hands up on this side of the room? Mr. Fatsick?
Yes. Sure, a couple will be hard to get out of.
Well, you could take as much time as you need. In fact, we could send Dave down there to help you if you need it.
George Fatsick, 2 Pinecrest Drive. As in any building, over the years, things have to be maintained or upgraded, and the middle school is one of those buildings. In this case, such items as the elevator, HVAC system, security doors, et cetera, and I'm not going to list all the items that we've heard before, need to be upgraded or replaced. So I am not against these items to be addressed. I do believe some of the items should have been addressed over the years and not let go. And in several cases, these items would have been reversed singularly by the state, such as the elevator, security doors, the state does reverse for those items. So over the years, so over the years, the argument now has come down to maintenance or renovate like new. The maintenance route would address all critical items that need to be done, and such items would be, some of the items would also be state-reversed. We have heard various numbers of that cost, and I will, for the sake of talking right now, somewhere between 12 and $15 million, and please don't hold me to that number. The renovate like new would also address these same items plus others. The cost would be approximately $62 million. With the expected state reimbursement, which is not guaranteed, it would bring the cost down to around $25 billion. It should be noted that this is a renovate like new on a 30-year-old building. In buildings ages, that is not old. That sounds, the renovate like new sounds good, for a couple of million dollars more, you get a lot more. And that is a figure that has been pushed, pushed $25 million. What has not been said about that $25 million figure is what it will cost the town and its residents over the bonding period. That figure comes out to around $40 million, nowhere near the other figures that we have heard. That's what interests on the bonding, on bonding, that we, the residents, will have to pay out, not the $25 million only. There are also the things that need to be taken into consideration before going to renovate like new. The cost of material is at an all-time high, along with availability. What it costs are, what it costs are higher than expected, well, we have to go out for more money, for another, for another referendum. This is how it happened in Farmington and their high school, it happened in Cromwell, and it happened in Sunday recently on their library. They all have to go back to residents for more money. What happens is if the state does not vote for the percentage that we were hoping for, we will end up paying more. The last item I wanted to bring up at this time of referendum, what is the best turnout time for the vote? Right now, you're proposing it to be in March. Most of our referendums, larger ones, have been either in the springtime or during another election. Having it in March may, because weather's still being on the, not the best weather, if we have bad weather, are we going to prevent people from coming out? As you can see by my comments, I'm not in favor of the renovate like new. This is on a 30-year-old building, which to me is still a new building. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, Mr. Bruzes.
Jerry Bruzes, 72 Wayne Drive. I'm in favor of the renovation like new. As a father of four in this district, all four of which are at Linden and will be going to the middle school. I'm appalled that we as a town have allowed the school to get to this point. I'm appalled that we failed our teachers and allow them to work in substandard conditions. I'm appalled to hear these children talking about mice and rodents and having to walk down different hallways. But I'm also appalled at the largest capital project this town will ever see. I'm also appalled at probably the largest, well, knowingly the largest school budget that we will have. I'm also appalled at what will potentially be one of the largest mill rates that we will experience as well. The reality is, I see every day children that are hungry and the elderly at our soup kitchens, food pantries, and shelters. The rate of homelessness and poverty in Connecticut is skyrocketing. The level of seniors accessing food is alarming. The number of folks that are seeking assistance for utility assistance, energy assistance, and other means of assistance does not meet the current demand that the state has at this point. The reality is, our past failures to address these schools are causing dire consequences now, inflated costs, and at the end of the day, will have direct effect on some of the poorest in our community. Not only have we failed the children at the middle school, not only have we failed the teachers at the middle school, we're now also going to fail the seniors and other vulnerable populations in our community who need tax relief and assistance the most. Shay Monos as a town.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council regarding the public hearing this evening? Yes.
Jesse Carlson, 26 Ashford Road. First, I just want to say that I'm super proud of all the children who came up here to speak. As a person who hates public speaking, actually, find it hard to believe I know Quinn, that it's really hard to come up here and speak in front of a lot of people, so I just want to say that I'm proud of all of you guys for doing that. I'm about to show my age. I was the first graduating class of MSP when it was built. It was a beautiful school, and it offered the newest and best technology that this town has ever seen. I actually went to every school in this town and renovated all the other ones after I left, so I was, MSP for the four months that I was there was pretty amazing. Both my children attended the middle school before it started to fall apart. They had the best education there and are flourishing as adults. My daughter is a biomolecular scientist, and my son is an IT specialist for UConn. So I'm not sure where the standard testing are, but my kids got an amazing education in this town, and they're still living in this town because of the education, and they will raise their families in this town because of our community and our education. It is simple. If a bill comes in the mail and it costs you $100, and somebody said, you know what, let me pay 60 bucks for you, and you pay 40, you think you're going to say, no, please don't, I'll pay the $100? No. And that's what this renovate like new project is. We are not going to have to cover the full $100. We are only paying 40% of that project. This is an absolute no-brainer, and I am in full support of the middle school being renovated like new. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on the public hearing this evening? Yes.
How's Mary's life?
Oh, it's wonderful. I did promise my wife that I would be home early and not have these meetings anymore until I'm off. I did not live up to that promise.
After you could stick around, we're probably not getting out of here until 10 o'clock tonight, so...
I know, I know, I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Jacob Rocco, 11 Diamond Avenue. I don't want to beat a dead horse, I think everybody in the room has made up their minds on this issue and whatnot, and I have no interest in pointing fingers or saying who said what and what plan was put forward when, and so on and so forth. I think that would be an unproductive use of time. I did want to make suggestions to the council, and I don't think anybody would disagree with this, but I could be unpleasantly surprised. I think when this goes out to vote, I think that everybody should have as much information as possible available to them to make that vote. They should have a holistic view of how their town's finances are going to look like over this year and with the deck going forward. So my suggestion would be that you set the referendum for the middle school date in tandem with the budget vote. They should be on the same ticket, the same time, this way the people in the community can see how much their town is going to be spending in their operations, and they can make the decision as to whether that debt fits into the plans or not on their own. Thank you for your time. It was good to see everybody, and I did want to end on a high note because I haven't seen any of you, and I don't have social media, so I don't post anything, but congratulations on winning the election.
Thank you.
And I do wish you good luck in that job. It's not, it's not fun, and you don't get paid enough sometimes. Good night.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to address the council? I'll ask you one more time, anyone wish to address the council on the public hearing this evening? All right, I am going to close the public hearing. Want to thank everyone for their comments. What we'll do is we'll take a little bit of a break here. I know most of you can't wait to see the rest of our meeting, but I understand you may have more important things to do tonight, so feel free to take a few minutes, and if you need to leave, go ahead and leave, and we'll resume the meeting in a couple minutes. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and, we'll call the meeting back to order. Next on our agenda tonight is minutes of the previous meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion and a second on the minutes of the January 16, 2024 regular meeting. Any comments, questions, or changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, announcements and reports.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just two reports. The Library Board of Trustees will actually have their February meeting next week, but the Director, Trish Tomlinson, has shared some positive data with the staff and with the board, based on... the board based on the last six months. She did projections for the remainder of fiscal year 2024 and reflects, you know, some good increases in key areas, including circulation, gate count, new cardholders, and especially attendance at the library programs. Just wanted to share that this evening. The other report is on the MSP Building Project Communication Steering Committee. It was referred to several times tonight, and Chris had asked me to give a brief report on the work that we have been doing over the past several weeks. And we have been meeting at least, sometimes twice, once a week, sometimes twice a week since January 4th. And the purpose of the committee was to give direction and input and approval regarding any communications that are generated by the town of Plainville on the proposed renovate like new project. Members of the committee were Chairperson Wazorko and myself from the Town Council, Chairperson Becky Tyrell from the Board of Ed, and the Vice Chair Rebecca Martinez, also Jared Bruces, a member of the Board of Ed, and two ex-officio members, were the Town Manager and the Superintendent of Schools. The specific communications that we addressed as our work on the committee included a very comprehensive informational website dedicated to just the middle school project, the Town of Plainville Facebook page, social media, signage, flyer, poster, and the newsletter that reached homes just a few days ago and went to all residents of the town, I believe. And also, we gave input on the schedule of both in-person and virtual presentations that will be done for the community. Most of those are, in fact, all of them are this week. It's a busy week. Our work is essentially done. We are having one more meeting this Thursday at 4:30, right here in the council chambers, to wrap up and do a little debriefing on our work. As many of you know, the town is very limited as to what we can do after we vote, if we do, which is planned, to actually go to referendum on the proposed ordinance. And meetings are public, 4:30 here in the council chambers. Just to add a note, is the, all the work that staff did, this really was remarkable, and, you know, working with us and pulling everything together to generate all these communications. They did a lot of the work. They're very patient with us in creating drafts and then taking all our comments and input and creating another draft, and really was, I very much appreciate it. Great job. And that's it.
All right. And I'll just second that, you know, I was good at sending comments on newsletters half an hour before the meeting started, so certainly the staff and the administration on both the board side and the town side, thank you very much for all your hard work and, you know, thank, just thank you, and, you know, now we get to kind of wind this part down and start the next process, so. Anyone else with any comments? Yes.
I would like to publicly announce and say welcome to two new members to the Memorial Day Association. They are Quinn Wazorko and Ben Gediman. They attended their first meeting this past month, a couple of weeks ago, and they were very, very helpful in their new suggestions and their new excitement, which came to us old farts, pardon my language. But it was good to have new blood and new excitement in our group, and we're looking very forward to this year's parade being, building upon last year and making it better in our ceremonies and et cetera, making things better for our town. So thank you. Thank you for joining.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Another announcement?
One other announcement. I don't think it affects this group of people, but we've seemed to have a slowdown on getting emails from the people in Honor Heights for quotes on what they're going to look at, you know, for their expenditures for connection fees, so that they can give us the information so that we can maybe help them again with a different number on the, on the connection loan. So if anyone's listening from, on TV, pass the word out that we need your information. That's it. I'm done.
All right. All right. Anyone else with an announcement or a report this evening? All right. We'll move to item number five, appointments and resignations.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Underwood.
Motion to appoint Michael Barr, 20 Root Avenue, Bristol, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second? Any comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Motion number two, appointment of Devin Gonzalez, 27 O'Sullivan Drive, Bristol, as a probationary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Any appointments or reappointments this evening? All right. We will move on to item number six. Seeing that this is the first week of the month, we'll go right to item seven, Report of the Town Attorney. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, on the parade, is that on Memorial Day?
It is. It's on the holiday.
All right. So I had already talked to some of my Unico chapters about trying to march in it, so I'll keep you guys, they've been asking me questions about it. I actually went to Apple Valley Bowling Lanes last night for the bowling league and mentioned it to them, too, and so I'll try to get a group to come march on Memorial Day.
And they kick off 9 o'clock, so.
I will try. I'm usually in Lucky Hill that day myself, just so you guys know, but I, we'll try. I really thought it was a neat idea for our group in this area. And then as far as, we had a pretty good resolution to one of the tax appeals in one of the more substantial properties this past week, that we actually got really the number that we wanted, and I was pretty satisfied with that. I think the assessor was, too. I'm going to be changing law firms. It's one of the things that's on here, why it's on here. I'm going to be going back to a firm that I was a partner with before I left to go to Hallard and Sage called McGivney Kluger. It's in Hartford. They have offices all over the place, New York, Florida, but they have an office at 30 Trips Street in Hartford, and I was a partner there when I was the South Windsor Town Attorney. I really don't anticipate there being any effect at all on my work for the town, other than I will have more time to do work for the town, given my move to this other firm. Just wanted to notify you of that, and I'll talk to the manager, talk to the manager about just the mechanics of that. I anticipate having, making the move by the end of this month, having completely made the move by then. So we're in the process of transitioning that, and I really don't think it's going to have any impact on you at all, except that I'm not going to establish office hours. So what I plan on doing is, I plan on being here from 2 o'clock on, on the days you have council meetings. So when you have council meetings, I'll be here from 2 o'clock till after the meeting, depending, you know, however long it is, and so that if people have, even with town employees or council members or anybody else who wants to come in, have issues, et cetera, I think it's a very efficient way to deal with a lot of the questions that I get, as opposed to doing emails back and forth. It's easier to just sit down and talk it out. I just did that with the assessor and the tax collector on the Camp Street lane issue, which we're working on, and it's just much more effective to me to have a meeting like that. So that's my plan, to establish office hours. Hopefully, the manager will be able to put me somewhere for those two days when I'm here, and I think that's, unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
I'm looking, enjoying it so far, so.
All right. Report of the Town Manager. Are you ready?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am. Thank you, and good evening. I have but just a few items, three, and then I'll turn it over to Andy for Happenings. The first of which is the, item number one is the extension of Robert Jackson Way. This request dates back to 2021 when Buck Fever LLC, aka Paul Mattio, applied for an extension to Robert Jackson Way in the Strawberry Fields Industrial Park. The application was to provide fundage for three building lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the plan and accepted a financial guarantee to ensure the road was constructed to town standards. Work began in earnest in 2022 and was completed in 2023. Upon completion, the road was inspected and passed muster with the Engineering Department. The financial guarantee was subsequently, excuse me, released, and the matter was referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an opinion on the proposed acceptance. On January 9, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a formal motion recommending that the Town Council officially accept the physical extension of Robert Jackson Way. There is an item under new business to accept the extension of Robert Jackson Way, so that's under new business. Item number two, the Honor Heights Sewer Project Update. I am working with the engineer to prepare and distribute mailing to residents summarizing the previous actions and process moving forward, trying to keep them up to date on what we're working on and outline that resolution of all the items and specific actions that we took. I'm working with the engineer as well to finalize and distribute a contractor's list, target date for mid to late February, or coordinating an outreach and discussion with interested contractors, and hopefully we'll have opportunity to structure some type of public informational meeting with a date to be determined as soon as we can. So just so you know, just the, what the first step we're doing is there were one property there that connects the sewer line through, near the Mott Corporation comes through the O'Donnell's property, and so we had made arrangements that we would be hooking them in as part of the arrangement for easement through their property, and so this is the opportunity to bring those contractors in. That's on our obligation to do, and so we think we can, from that meeting, just bring board ahead to try to discuss a larger meeting with, with the residents. So that's, that's our thought process, but that won't be happening until mid February, later this month. And so I'm also working with, with Morris, the Town Attorney, to clarify the eligibility for deferment of the assessment and other things we need to do under the program. There's a lot of internal issues that we've got to deal with in terms of processing payments, documentation, forms, so forth. So a few of those outstanding items that we do, we're doing, so there's an item under new business to record the necessary documents for the final benefit, beneficial assessment on the land records. And beyond doing that, I'll again be working with Morris to finish up that.
We don't have a public, if they have a public hearing, that's all.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so the last item is Shuttle Meadow Pump Station Reconstruction Project. Now that the Shuttle Meadow Pump Station project has been awarded, the town will proceed to submit an application to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. The fund operates a loan program to which WPCA will request $3,175,896. In addition to the application, there's also a resolution to proceed with approving and authorizing Town Manager enter into a project loan agreement. This action is necessary because it is a competitive funding source, and authorization would expedite the process. There are two items under new business to authorize the grant application and loan agreement, so that is before you as well. Happy to answer any questions on any of those three items.
Any questions or comments for the Town Manager? The only thing I would add is, you know, we did have some questions from the public hearing that I was writing down as we were going. I'll just, you know, as far as trying to follow up, I might need your assistance to put some numbers together for some of these, but, you know, the plan would be, you know, either reaching out to these individuals individually, or certainly at the next meeting, you know, I would try to answer what I could from those questions, so you'll be getting a call from me, probably.
Not a problem. We can do that.
Thank you.
And before I, before I turn it over to Andy for Happenings, I just wanted to bring to your attention, there is a, a letter here, and I thought, just to acknowledge the fact that a resident had written a letter that I wanted you to see, just about indicating that an officer had come to her rescue, so to speak, with going above and beyond and helping a resident without, you know, any hesitation. And I just think these are, these are nice to get, because we don't often get them, and I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and pass it along to the council, because I think, I think it's nice when people take the time to, to write a letter and say that someone, you know, on, you know, as an employee, whether, you know, municipal employee, you know, whatever department, that they went out of their way to help a resident, and I think that shouldn't go unnoticed. And so for that, I just wanted you to have a copy and to acknowledge that.
All right.
Is there, is, is there some way that we can make sure that this is recognized on his record?
Well, I'll leave that.
As a complimentary thing or whatever?
Yeah, I haven't, I will talk to the chief about that, and I think that's more of an internal or see what his recommendation is and whether or not, you know, that, that sort of goes. It's not, I don't believe it's to the level of a citation or commendation. It's more of a, you know, thank you very much. It's just a, I guess, a, an example of what many officers within our department, and a lot of it goes unnoticed, this one is, is, you know, person took the time to write, so. But that's a very good point, Dan, and I'll bring that up with the chief.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments for the Town Manager? Did we get happenings tonight?
Oh, yeah. Get happenings. Get happenings every night. All right. I got a couple to share with you. First, starting off with the Board of Assessment Appeals. The Board of Assessment Appeals will be holding meetings during the month of March of 2024 in the Municipal Center for the purpose of hearing appeals related to real estate and personal property assessments for October 1, 2023 grand list, as well as supplemental motor vehicle assessments for October 1, 2022 grand list. Pursuant to the Connecticut General Statutes, written applications for appeal hearings are required to be filed between February 1st, but no later than 5:00 PM on February 20th, 2024. Applications may be obtained in the Assessment and Revenue Collection Office or online at www.planevillect.com. Appellants will be notified by mail of the time and date in March of their appeal hearing. From the Plainville Public Library and for information on all library programs, including registration, you can call the library at 860-793-1446, or visit www.planevillect.com/library. On Thursday, February 8th at 1:00 PM, the library will be showing My Big Fat Greek Wedding 3. No registration is required. This is a movie night. On Saturday, February 10th, from 12, 12 o'clock to 3:00 PM, anyone between the ages of 11 to 17 is invited to play retro and current Nintendo systems. This program is provided by One Up Games of Massachusetts. On Wednesday, February 21st at 6:00 PM, Jeffrey Fletcher from Ruby and Calvin Fletcher African American Museum will discuss and share a collection of artifacts that reflect turbulent times for Africans throughout American history, and this program is put in celebration of Black History Month. Thursday, February 29th at 6:00 PM, the Connecticut Museum of Culture and History will discuss Rosie the Riveter, and this is the most iconic image of a working woman during World War II and the impact she had on women in Connecticut. The program was originally scheduled for January 16th, but due to weather was postponed, so this is the rescheduling date. And from the Plainville Senior Center, and for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call them at 860-747-5728. All programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The Middle School of Plainville Renovation Project presentation for the Senior Center is scheduled for tomorrow, February 7th, at 12:30 PM, actually Wednesday, February 7th, thank you, at 12:30 PM.
You're just seeing if we're paying attention.
I am.
It might be Tuesday.
It could. We're doing one tomorrow, too, at the library at 9:30 AM. So we got presentations all week on the middle school. But this one's oriented, it'll be at the Senior Center, so folks who go there each day can, can listen and learn more information on the project as well. It'll be the superintendent and myself will talk about the projects, we'll talk about the rationale, the timeline, costs, the state funding, and we can answer any questions as they come up. A movie matinee called A Dog's Purpose is on Monday, February 12th at 2:00 PM. It's about a devoted dog that discovers the meaning of its own existence. The movie is rated PG. Senior Bullying with the Pines in Bristol Health. This is a snack and learn session on Tuesday, February 13th, from 1:30 PM to 2:30 PM. You can join Heather Hitchcock, Community Education Manager with Bristol Behavioral Health, as she discusses the realities of bullying among seniors and the impact it has on everyone. Vintage Valentines and Chocolate Treat. On Wednesday, February 14th at 2:30 PM, you can see and hear about the collection of vintage Valentines owned by one of the Plainville Senior Center members.
vintage Valentines owned by one of the Plainville Senior Center members, Joyce Goldberg. Many of the vintage Valentines are ones that you may recognize from your own childhood as well. Snappy Senior Photography on Thursday, February 15th at 10:00 AM. This month's topic is how to crop and enhance photos for prints using cell phones and the Walgreens app and website. This is welcome, any new members are welcome or current members. The Memory Cafe at the Senior Center is on Thursday, February 15th at 2:00 PM. The Memory Cafe is a warm and welcoming program for individuals with memory loss. Anyone experiencing memory loss is welcome to attend with their loved ones or caregivers. Help for Veterans on Tuesday, February 20th at 10:00 AM. This is by appointment only. You can call Jason Coppola, the Veteran Service Officer, at 203-805-6340 to find out your status, or if you need any assistance filling out paperwork. This is a face-to-face appointment at the Senior Center. And the last event that I have to share for you tonight is Caregiving Connections on Tuesday, February 20th at 10:00 AM. This is an opportunity to connect with other caregivers at the Senior Center to support one another on the journeys and recognizing the challenges and frustrations of 24/7 caregiving. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for the town manager? All right. We can now, yeah, go ahead.
Chairman, I think, we didn't cover, I think, just a reminder that Wednesday night is the joint meeting with the superintendent, 7:00 PM at the library in terms of budget forecast.
You may want to send a reminder of.
Yes, we will. Yeah. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we'll move to item nine, public comment. At this point in the meeting, anyone that wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Mr. Kislik.
John Kislik, 65 Forests, Alamo. Let's talk about, we lost Joel and Helen, losing our warriors, our old hometown connect, citizen property owners. Most of our members are gone, so we're gone. I hope that when I pass away, if you're still up there, you'll have such kind words for me also.
I'll read whatever you write me, guys.
John, rest assured, we'll keep it within three minutes.
As long as it's within three minutes, and Marilyn will make sure, she'll hold me to that.
Got it. Got it. Five.
All right. Four. We'll, we can write, we'll figure it out. Don't worry.
Anyway, I have another form of information tonight, nothing new. I was, I was kind of upset that the steering committee had to hire a professional marketing company. But then, you know, I attended your steering committee meeting one night, and when I saw that chaos up there and saw these guys here with befuddled look on their faces, I said, I think you needed the marketing company.
Oh, yeah. You missed the first meeting. That was.
The one where it was just crazy up there. You kept quiet because they couldn't let you get a word in.
Well, you missed the first meeting. It was more chaotic, believe it or not.
I'm glad I did. Well, you got it solved. Anyway, what I want to know is, this is the information I like to get, because none of it's out there. Who authorized the hiring of Tall Timbers Marketing as pertaining to the middle school project? And by what authority was it granted? What was the dollar amount being paid to them? And from what account are they being paid? I'll give a copy to you and the town when I, when I leave.
You can get to that information.
Now, just one other thing. You know, when these administrations change, like in Washington, like President Trump got knocked out and Biden comes in, and they just change everything, it reminded me of this council. You know, there's a saying I heard first time probably more than 60 years ago when I was in junior high school, "To the victor goes the spoils." And I see this as, you know, somebody else new comes in, and they're just, I don't know how to put it, they're just greedy or unkind, and you move in there, you forget about what everybody else has done. And it's just, to me, it doesn't seem right, because it's going to turn around again like it always does. Couple of years ago, you guys were knocked out, they come in. You know, I just, I just wish that this wouldn't happen, especially with the middle school the way it did, like so many people wanted two choices. And I think that's something that should have been, should have been kept in there to give the people more of a choice, but that's most of the way.
Previous council had that option. They chose not to do it. You know, I don't mean to push back on you, but make sure you give us a copy of that, please.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wish to address the council this evening? Anyone else? All right. We'll close public comment. No old business this evening, so we'll move right to item 11, new business. Can I have a motion, please, after I turn on my microphone? Thank you. Sorry about that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
A motion to accept the extension of Robert Jackson Way.
Second.
All right. Motion in a second. Any comments or additional questions?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Item number two.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Gediman.
Motion for the town council acting as the water pollution control authority to authorize the town manager to record the necessary documents for the final benefit assessment for the Honor Heights sanitary sewer system.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions related to this? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Hurley.
Motion for the town, motion for, thank you. Motion for the town council acting as the water pollution control authority to authorize the town manager to enter into contracts with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and execute any and all documents as may be required by the state or federal government in connection with said contracts pertaining to the Clean Water Fund application for the Shuttle Meadow Pump Station Reconstruction Project.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Gediman.
Motion for the town council acting as the water pollution control authority to adopt a resolution entitled, Resolution Approving a Loan Agreement to Obtain Clean Water Fund Financing for Water Pollution Abatement Facilities.
Second.
All right. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Underwood.
Motion to establish a public hearing in the Municipal Center on Thursday, March 7th, 2024, at 7:00 PM regarding the town manager's fiscal year 2025 proposed budget.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Hurley.
Motion to establish the following special meetings of the town council for the purpose of considering and acting upon the fiscal budget for the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget, March 11, 12, 13, 14, 19, and 20 of 2024, in the Municipal Center at 6:30 PM.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the dates?
Put these on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, you know, all those opposed? Don't worry, the chair is aware of that. Motion passes. I did vote on it, right? I'm sorry, I lost my place for a second. Before I entertain item seven, I just wanted to ask a quick question to town manager. If we're looking to have a special meeting on February 13th, would it be appropriate to add it to the agenda tonight, or is that something that I can just call?
Yeah, I believe it was already set.
Did we already, did we already? I don't believe, I don't think we voted on that yet, and that was just, I probably should have brought it up under your report, but I put the note at the end here, so.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a good point, and as a regular scheduled meeting tonight, I don't think it's a, that's a great idea.
I don't think so.
Because I don't think we did cover that. We alluded to it and talked about it in the schedule, but didn't do that.
Okay. Well, what I, what I've asked then is if for someone, if they can add to the agenda item seven, to set a special meeting on February 13th, 2024, for the purpose of, well, we'll just set a special meeting, I don't need to be that specific, but seven o'clock? Can someone make a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to add that to the agenda.
We have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of making that? Item seven.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. That's item seven. Now just a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve, oh wait, we're approving the special meeting.
Special meeting on February.
Motion.
Who was the second to that?
I think Mr. Underwood.
I heard Dave.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Okay. So, Mr. Chair, motion to approve the special meeting on February 13th at 7:00 PM.
I would suggest we, a little more description besides that.
Yeah, you may just set the date, the time, and where.
Date, time, so we have to have the way.
So, motion to approve the special meeting on.
Motion to set the special meeting.
Motion to set a special meeting on February 13th at 7:00 PM.
In the municipal chambers.
In the municipal chambers. Okay.
Okay.
Second.